I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Powers, should we say thank you to your daughter who does serve in one of those roles and has had a critical role for all of us in our own safety?
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this. Next, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
Next.
School support services, Mr. Bishop.
Who's his name?
And Mr. Bishop's area. Suzie's coming up. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we? I skipped over that. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Ms. Bryant seconded by Mr. Dodd to adopt the agenda presented by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here is four zero. Thank you.
Good morning. I am here to ask approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod.
Two names that are disappointing and sad, but you know, they were coming to see on our drop from resignation. This is not, this is just the formal moving them to res- to resign from drop. This is not their last hurrah. Is that correct? We still have another Goldenrod that they'll be on?
The resignation from drop for Mr. Simon and Ms. Haynes. This is it.
This is it?
Yes.
If that being the case, then board members, I would like to ceremoniously, I'm going to vote against of that. Because I-
You don't know what's gonna happen.
I want to just thank both of them for their amazing service. All of them, including Ms. Belmont. But Ms. Haynes has been so valuable to so many students and Mr. Simon is an institution unto himself.
May I have a motion?
I will make the motion that we accept instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dodd, second. You did that second one, Ms. Bryant, to accept the personal personnel information and instructional information on the Goldenrod. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And what is our vote now?
And that is purely only? It is. It's purely only for ceremonial to say that I do not wish them to leave.
Okay. Three one passes.
I ask for approval for Jennifer Story to be appointed to the assistant principal position at Inverness Middle School effective February 24th, 2016.
Move approval that we accept superintendent's recommendation of Jennifer Story as assistant principal for Inverness Middle School effective February 24th, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kelly, second by Mrs. Dodd to approve Jennifer Story as assistant principal of Inverness Middle School effective February 24th, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here is four zero.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Congratulations, Jennifer Story.
School operations, who's going to decide?
Is this just a motion?
Yeah, okay.
I move approval to, I'm sorry, I move approval for advertising for a public hearing at the April 12th, 2016 school board meeting to receive public comment on the recommended materials for our 2016, 2017 instructional materials adoption.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kelly, second by Mrs. Bryant to request, to approve, to advertise for a public hearing of the April 12th, 2016 school board meeting to receive public comment on the recommended materials for our 2016, 2017 instructional materials adoption. All in favor?
Aye.
Here is four zero. And where will these materials be so we can take a look?
They have not all- Good morning. Mr. School Board, Ms. Simmel, Ms. Redd, John. They all have not been selected yet. We're still in that process, Ms. Powers. They will, we're going to have a copy in your board office for your review as well as at the TRC for a public review if somebody wants to look at that. I will say, public hearing, April 12th will be, you know, sharing selections, asking for public input. Twenty days by statute prior to that April 12th public hearing will be advertising on the website how the public can access to additional copies of those materials.
Twenty days prior to-
April 12th, yep. So, do you have any questions in the meantime?
And Dr. Gettys, while you're there too, I don't know if you, I know Dr. Gettys and I have shared some emails back and forth, but there was legislation that was pending that would have changed this process slightly that if someone were to object, currently the law states if a parent objects to any of the material, then there's another process that we have to go through. The legislation was to say basically that any member of the public could object to the material and then it would go through a process. That passed the House. The Senate has basically, the educational committee has pretty much adjourned and so that right now they suspect will die as a result of that. So, it doesn't look like that particularly. It just happens to be that it's this process that it was affecting, so I figured you'd get a good chance to just update us on it.
And we often get a lot of good input from the public, from parents or people up to do these stuff.
And you may recall, you know, we, it's important, we have a parent honor review committees as part of that process.
So now, the review is only by a parent, then you're saying that the change to that statute, does it-
Anyone can review it. The only ones, any public member can review it. The only thing that changed, it had to do is who could object after we go through the process, who could actually do a formal objection to the material and then there's another process we have to go through. This board in statute still has the ultimate decision, just happens to do that we basically have another round of input and review.
Mr. Dodd, so we have that public hearing April 12th. At the May school board meeting, we'll be asking the school board to actually approve the materials that are being recommended. At that point, a parent, by current statute, has 30 days to file a petition if they're concerned about something that you've approved. And so, if they file that petition, we then have another timeframe fairly quick to have another public hearing to hear their concerns. And then at that point, the decision of the school board will be final.
Thanks. Okay, I'll try to Google that.
I have two things. I sent you a copy of the letter first. I forwarded a letter to you in response to some emails that each of you received from GHN Media or Groundhog News to have, to follow response to the questions that were being asked. And so, if there's any, I need to have more approval to respond on behalf of the board to send out the motion letter that I drafted.
Do you need a formal motion?
That'll work.
I'd move that we instruct our attorney to send the response to the Groundhog News immediately. That'll go out today, Phil.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kelly, second by Mrs. Bryant to send response to Groundhog News. Our attorney has, has shared with us, has written out to share with us. All in favor? You did come, so all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here is four zero. Thank you.
The other thing is, there's a gentleman who, he requested a public records request a while ago in regards to a certain individual who he thinks is a sex offender residing within a thousand feet of a bus stop. And I know a letter was sent to each of you regarding that matter, wanting us to have a public hearing on it. I would like, he's requesting a response at the date and the time of the public meeting and proof of it. You know, you're not required, when a citizen asks to have a public hearing or a special meeting on any of that. In addition, it would be more appropriate for this to be forwarded to the sheriff's office to, you know, to review it because if he's moved within a thousand feet. First off, I have no idea if this person is a sexual offender. I don't know if he's residing within a thousand feet of the bus stop. But if he is and taking that as true, then it's more, it's appropriate for the sheriff's office to investigate that matter and see if there's anything to be done. I'm not quite sure what the school board would do anyhow, you know.
We don't have jurisdiction.
Right. There's no jurisdiction. I'm just gonna let you know that I'm just gonna forward this on to the sheriff's office and I will respond to the individual with the letter and come to the sheriff's office with it.
And if for some reason a member of the public, they didn't find satisfaction there, the state attorney would be, I guess, the next step?
You could go to the state attorney's office and request them to take and try to get them to do a direct file. But I'm sure the sheriff's office is pretty diligent about, you know, warning or notifying people when someone who's on the sexual offender database resides, you know. I think they warn everyone who is in a certain location of the presence and also enforce, you know, whether they're within a thousand feet of a stop and, you know, a thousand feet of the school or anything else. So, they take that very seriously. Forward this on.
I think we should have a response. I mean, this has been, we've been put on notice. I think that this is, should be a prior response by the sheriff's office. I think it will be, but I would like to know back as a board member, because of the letter that was sent us, what was found to be the case. I mean, I think that's a good thing that we, you know, if any citizen brings up to us a concern like this, that we just don't say we're just gonna forward it and pass it on. I mean, I know we're gonna do that, but that we're taking this seriously and we will get an answer. And-
What I will do is I'll put the individual over and forward it to the sheriff's office. I'll follow up with him. I'll send it over to, you know, the commander and ask for him to, you know, once they take a look at this, to let me know what has happened. Is that what you're requesting?
Yes. And then you can then let us know in writing or an email or a memo or whatever so that, because, you know, this, the letter obviously is a public record now, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, it's, there's information here that could very well be correct. It may not be correct, but we have an obligation and duty and as school board members, trust to know exactly what the situation is with this young man and the bus stops that are affected.
Yeah, not a problem. I will, I'll follow up either in an email or a letter to you or as soon as I find out something, maybe at the next board meeting if it's close to that time. But I'll follow up with you and let you know what the outcome of this was.
And Ms. Farmers here too, she wants to address this. She don't have to yet unless they have a question. But, and just so the board is aware of, and I think you all are aware of this, anytime that we get a phone call or a comment that there is a sexual predator or anyone who's been convicted of that, that Marilyn has moved bus stops before. So, she works in conjunction with Sheriff's Department because either we get notified or they get notified and then Marilyn does move bus stops.
And I'm gonna hold the actual question for her to respond to unless she wants to now. But I believe some of the software that we are talking about, does it not provide or could it not provide some of that information to the buses?
Yes, we get the notification from the sheriff's office and we program that into our routing software so that if we go to place a bus stop, it alerts us. But our obligation is not to place a bus stop within a thousand feet of a sex offender or predator under conditional release, only under conditional release, if they're already in that area of residence. Now, if we already have a bus stop there, they contact us ahead of time and say, we have this offender or predator being released and here's the address here she wants to live at. We tell them if we have a bus stop within a thousand feet, then they cannot move to that address. We certainly could have bus stops within a thousand feet of a offender or predator because we have children that live within a thousand feet of an offender or predator. So, what we do is we try to make sure that they don't have to pass that home, certainly don't wait at that home. There are cases where that isn't always possible. For example, if the predator lives at the end of the street that's not travelable, we make sure that we place the stop as far away as we can, but the children are going to have to. So, we ask the parents to accompany them to the stop in those cases. So, there are gonna be situations where there are stops. There are some offenders on the offenders list who have children who live in their home. So, they could have a bus stop there for their children, but then we place another bus stop for other children in the neighborhood.
What is a conditional release?
Honestly, I don't know why they're put under conditional release. That's a law enforcement issue. I just know that if they're on conditional release and they're already in a residence where there has not been a bus stop, we can't put one within a thousand feet. If they're being released and we already have a bus stop, they can't move into that address. I don't know what puts them on conditional release or what doesn't.
So, do we have any information or have you been informed any information references subject?
We have provided information for a public records request, yes, of bus stops within the area of the locations people are being asked for. We are now being asked to provide additional information for previous years and we're pulling that information now.
Do you have any information that this subject is a sexual predator?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. I'm not sure which case it is.
Tyler Anthony Jackson?
I don't know that right offhand. I can certainly look that up and see if he's in our, in our database.
Who, Ms. Simmel, who from the administration will like follow up with this gentleman? Is that, is that probably Marilyn or would that be?
No, probably, it'll be one of my staff. But, but I know that our staff has already looked into this and whatever, and I don't have the letter in front of me, Ms. Redd, I guess, whatever he determined or said that he was convicted of, that's not the record they're finding. So, they're working with Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
As soon as we get the final on all that, we will certainly go to them.
And public records requests have more than one location, so I'm not sure.
I know Ms. Sernich was also looking into it where the Sheriff's Department-
Absolutely.
-find out what kind of conviction it was, if there was one.
I mean, I welcome citizens bringing anything to our attention like this. I mean, you know, it's nature-
Well, we do too because, let me, because our information's only as good if they're registered. Because, you know, if one of them moved in and they're not registered for a while, we don't know they're there.
That's exactly.
We agree.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Farmers.
That's all I have.
Any other business?
I have just something. Madam Chair, we have, I think we've been made aware, I know I have through some of the commissioners, that on, I believe, March 1st, the Citrus County, Fourth County Commission is meeting regarding the review of impact fees and the potential of them lifting their moratorium. I was contacted by some of the individuals there that asked if we were gonna participate in that meeting at all. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we have to make a presentation of sorts, but I do think it would be in our board's best interest to maybe have the chairperson prepare a respectful statement reaffirming the board's position. And if the board was agreeable to that, I would be more than happy to suggest all of us do like we did in 2011 and accompany the chair and just stand behind you as you read that statement into the record and then, you know, then we go on our way. If that meeting needs to be noticed, that's fine, but that's just my suggestion. There's two things though that I, or one thing in particular that I would just add as a part of our historical position on impact fees. And that is that we really cannot continue doing this, that we start and we stop funding capital. And we have some long-term needs. So, my suggestion is, is that maybe we offer that we would participate in a joint study as to how and what is the best way to fund capital infrastructures in Citrus County, based on Citrus County needs. Is that to depend on just impact fees and adware taxes? Is that some other mechanism or is there something else? Because we're often being told conflicting things and our board sits on one side and sometimes other people sit on a different view of this. Maybe we need someone else to tell us what is a long-term solution. But I don't think where we're going is the best situation. The way we've been doing things is entirely the best manner of handling things, of that starting and stopping. And I think one of the ways to do that may be to say, okay, what is in the best interest of the community, the adware taxpayers, and our economic development with regards to how we fund capital infrastructure?
How are you suggesting, any particular person group?
No. I think that's, could be something staff looks into. And I'm just suggesting that it's something we're open to. When we, our position has basically been, we need to fund and we have very limited tools that are disposable. I apologize. Oh, and the only thing I was gonna say too is if you do consider sending a letter, these are just my notes. I'll pass these along. You can have them just to give you in advance. And Madam Chair, you may line through anything of interest, I mean, circle anything of interest and keep anything. And there's nothing you need to have to do, but I just wanted to share with my, my feelings on that.
I have a question for you, Tom. Starting and stopping. Who's been doing the starting and stopping?
I'm just gonna go and be politically correct to say not the school.
Thank you. That's what I was, that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you. And your ends, you say March 1st?
It's March the 1st. So, if we are going to accompany attending, then we, if we do need a public notice, that there is time to do that. If we don't need a public notice because we're not gonna give comment, you know, you, you know, we would accompany you to give a statement. I just think we've continuously tried to give a single voice from this board. And I remember 2011, this board did that very same thing and we attended there. Ironically, it was the same night that the port was funded. And-
Remember it well.
So, it was, it's a very memorable night to me. But I would just say that I don't, I think that it needs to be a voice from this board and I don't necessarily think we need to do that alone. So, I'd be certainly willing to accompany.
And I think if we should do that, have a problem, it's fair to say on March the 1st, I would-
Your mic.
Oh, it's on. I am, I'll stay on March the 1st.
We can have our vice chair do it if that's, and I would be ready if Mr. Dodd is also able for that too.
Does that work for you?
Mr. Dodd, yes.
Well, my thought, my question is, I mean, we made our, our position clear with the county commission and obviously that's, our goal was to keep some of that message, right? My question is, will there be another study? At what time would there be another impact fee report? And I see Mr. Dixon here in regards to the information that I've received and I think probably most of you have, is that, well, you know, when our group comes back, that they will reinstitute the impact fees, the school impact fees. And our concern is that, you know, and Ms. Bryant was, you know, correct to say we want impact fees, right? We want it for, you know, for impact fees. We don't want the school impact fee, the transportation impact fees to be passed and ours not. But when will there be another study of that process?
The impact fees have to be studied every three to five years in order to use current information so it can be valid. So, my understanding is that the data now is about a year old and that the moratorium will be automatically lifted in February of 2017. But the board county commissioners chose to look at it a year before to see, you know, what the impact has been and whether or not it should be lifted before then, the moratorium. The other issue with raising impact fees is that there's a 90-day waiting period between when the board has a public hearing to raise impact fees and when it gets implemented. So, even if the board chooses to lift the moratorium, then they have to have another public hearing, then they have to actually lift the moratorium and then it becomes effective 90 days from that day. So, really, there's not that much difference between lifting the moratorium and when it's gonna be lifted anyway. But to answer your question about the study, the study has to be done again probably in about two, two and a half years.
Now, this study, the current study though, and I think maybe Mr. Dodd may be thinking that too, it, I think it finished though and was presented to us in draft form in December 2014. We've been kind of formally adopted it at the beginning of 2015, though the board county commission didn't adopt it until later. So, I mean, it, I'm saying, we know it usually takes six months to do, you know, kind of a study. So, really, this is information from 2014.
I think the clock starts ticking when-
Oh, I'm sorry. No, Mr. Dodd, just pointing for my own letter. It says that the Duncan study, we went and did it in 2014. We unanimously approved the Duncan study from a December, it was, and that's what I pulled from December 2013, was their initial draft study.
The clock starts ticking from their adoption date. So, I would say two to three years from the date they adopted it is when they will need to update it or start the process.
And maybe what, and that's why, Madam Chair, I say all of what I shared is purely for kind of informational help on this. But maybe it is when the impact fee study is done that a new component be passed, whether it be done by whoever has awarded that or someone else, to look at what the impact of, the economic impact that is best for our community and what tools and mechanisms. As a school board, we are much more limited. We can't, we can't as easily come up with MSBUs and MSTUs and things of that nature. I know that right now there's conversation on sales tax. I don't know that that's gone overly well in at least the circles that I've talked to. It's no disrespect to anyone. I think it's a, I think anything and everything should be at least considered and talked about. But again, I think what the school board has been consistent on is we can't continue this starting and stopping. There needs to be an equitable process for this. And unfortunately for this board, or fortunately, we have to manage our budget based on a policy decision that another government agency makes. And we have to live with those consequences. We have some, some big projects ahead of us in the next five and 10 years. And we can't really even get into budgeting those if we don't, by statute, we can't budget those until we have a means to pay for those.
Through like not knowing what your salary is, you know, from month to month, year to year. You can't plan it.
You just can't plan. And so, that, that is, you know, we have gotten through these difficult times. And I say difficult times, meaning the economic challenges that we've had the last number of years. Duke Energy, because we've, we've lived as thin as we can. Mr. Calasanti, all of them have done a great job trying to do what we minimally had to. I want to make sure I say Ms. Farmers as well. She's patched up our buses and kept them functional and so that we didn't have to make those, those purchases. We all know that while capital infrastructure dollars get sometimes funded differently, for us, capital needs are still capital needs. And I say that with regards to, we know the challenges of capital, of the reduced capital funding that we've had. Doug and I don't know any difference, but you all know that there was a very different time for that. So, I just, I think that one of my concerns is that March 1st, if they're having a meeting and they somehow think that we are, they're expecting to hear from us, my response or feeling is, is simply if they are going to bring back any impact fees, then we believe that should include the school impact fees. I'm not even get, I'm not interested in getting into a debate again about do what we say. I'm just saying if they're going to do it with one category, we're asking that school board, schools impact fee also be included.
Right, and with how to be placed on the agenda? Right, and with how to be placed on the agenda to present this.
And if.
Is Verdurami, school board to be placed on the agenda, the March 1st meeting?
Well, I think all we need to do is just send the letter and then ask that that letter be put into their, yeah, into their backup.
But we need to be there. And Mr. Dixon, you'll be there.
I'll probably be there. I'll be on vacation that week, but I just wanted to make a comment about, I mean, I can change it if you need me there, but I really don't think to do. But going back to what Mr. Kennedy said, I think that one of the things that I have learned from the different impact fee consultants that we've had for the last 15 years is that every community is different. And that Citrus County is a changing community. It's at a point where it's going to have a lot of economic growth and population growth in the next few years. And this is a good time to look at alternatives. It's a, you know, it's a changing point. It's, you know, if we're going forward, we're gonna have different conditions. You've got the new power plant that's gonna come online, it's gonna create some tax revenue. You've got the Suncoast Parkway that's gonna be built, it's gonna create some growth. You've got potential for more retail here. You know, there's a lot of things that are gonna change. And this would be a real good time to take a look at, you know, where the county is, where it's going, and what the most fair and equitable way is to fund infrastructure so you're not starting and stopping, something that's reliable. Maybe impact fees is part of that, you know, maybe it's in the mix, but there may be other things that you could look to, to supplement your capital needs.
And the school district may be, again, what we, is looked at as what our tools are available, could be different than what the counties are. And all of that is part of a, to me, an economic plan. One thing like, you know, Mr. Dixon said, we've got a new plant, gas plant that's gonna come online. You know, that's gonna have a positive impact to our capital roll. And it would be good for us to be able to then, to be able to have some understanding, okay, how will that impact us? And that will be dollars that we can look to being able to budget. But that would need to have, again, a consultant or somebody have a conversation with the, with the property appraiser, some of the plans that are being done, maybe even meet with Duke Energy to see, you know, what their plans and how that will come into. All of those pieces, I think, are important to be looked at. And I don't think just a standard impact fee study accomplishes, that's accomplishing what our future capital needs are, but it doesn't necessarily tell us how to pay for it. It just says what the dollar amount of the student station impact is going to be. And in the past, we've just said, well, that's the impact and we just assess that.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, you mentioned, you said, look at different alternatives, different alternatives to the impact fees. So you're saying if the county were to continue to not have the impact fee associated with schools, you're saying different alternatives? Are you talking about sales tax? What are you talking about there? What are your?
Well, there've been some conversations about different kinds of fees or different kinds of revenue sources. Sales tax is certainly one of them. You know, we haven't had sales tax in the past because we don't have a lot of commercial retail here, but in the next few years, that could change with everything that's happening here. We might have an opportunity to have more revenue from a sales tax. There are other alternatives out there. And I'm not a public finance expert, but I know that when Tindal Oliver did the impact fee study a few years ago, they suggested that the county look at, you know, because every county's different. Some have impact fees, some don't. For example, in the city of Gainesville, in Latshawood County, they don't, they have high sales tax because they have a lot of properties that aren't on, publicly owned properties that aren't on the tax roll. So they supplement that by having a sales tax because of the student population there and because of the University of Florida. Orlando has a high sales tax. The city of Clearwater has a high property tax because of all the oceanfront property down there. You know, somebody can take a look at Citrus County and determine what the best mix would be for us instead of relying exclusively on ad valorem, ad valorem tax, which is really what most rural counties have, is just ad valorem. But, you know, we're at the point now where we're getting ready to grow quite a bit, I think. And going forward, you know, it would be beneficial for the county as a whole, not just the school board, to look at that and determine, you know, present that information to the citizenry so that they can make some choices. Because if you just go to somebody and say, we wanna create a tax, they're never gonna be for it. But if you present the big picture and you show, you know, the benefits to one over another, you know, the downside of impact fees to me is obvious, that we go through a battle every two and a half to three years and then we end up in a moratorium and something is better than nothing. You know, that's the downside to impact fees. The upside to impact fees is the revenues there when you need it. It's not like property tax where it takes two and a half to three years to generate property tax. In impact fees, you get the revenue upfront when you really need it. But for the sales tax, it would be similar to an impact fee, you get the revenue and the activity occurs every year. So.
And I'm not sure personally that, that sales tax is going to be the solution for schools. Just, I just think that what concerns me is we have to have a long-term, a long-term agreement. That's something I know that Mr. Dixon and the county are working on a long-term agreement. But I think that that truly has to be something that we don't, I mean, you all have been fighting this battle before I was on the board. I'm sure if we continue the way we are, it's gonna be fought long after all of us are gone from this board. In the meantime, there continues to be capital needs that are gonna continue to grow that we've got to face. I wanna do that that's in the best interest of our community and in our students. And I think that if that means that we have someone to look and say, for example, in some of those communities, as Mr. Dixon was saying, they're all about condensed new growth. So when they have a, in Pasco County as an example, if they go in there, it's very easy to go to a developer who's gonna develop 200 new homes and say, we're gonna put that burden on that developer. Well, we have 10,000 lots in the Central Ridge area, vacant lots, platted roads built, that infrastructure is there. Now it's a matter of impact of any new home that comes in there and what is that impact for the life of that home on our capital needs. This board knows, the problem is, we actually, it takes us, when we don't collect impact fees, it takes us over a decade of not collecting that impact fee just to get back to, in the 1.5 mils that we get. It takes us in collecting ad valorem taxes over 10 years to get what we didn't collect on the front end. And that's based on the 50% collection of the needs. So we're, we have, we understand our problem. I just think that if, on March 1st, if the, I don't want the Board of County Commission to meet and think that we were silent on the issue. And that's to me, I think, the initial, most important.
And all the areas you bring up, there are people out there who have experience with big cities, with medium-sized cities, small cities, they have different solutions, different things to offer, and we're not tapping into all of them. And as you said, we have to look at, not so much to who we are right now, who we're gonna be in five years, 10 years, we have to plan for that. So I think bringing in people who are really experts, broad experts, not just a person who studies one thing, to be able to suggest this and meet with everybody and get input from the people here too.
And I think the counties at that crossroads in the census.
They are, are having a discussion on the half-cent sales tax, right?
Exactly.
And, you know, I'm, you know, we have to plan definitely. We have to look.
I think the school board could be a part of at least saying, listen, we're willing to come to a table to participate in that and on for that. So that's really interesting. In the meantime, we still, we still have this issue of, we need to be funded, we need to have some proper equitable funding.
Absolutely. And all the members here on this, who have different expertise in your area and areas of impact, which you're talking about, development, law enforcement, education, we all have that knowledge and we can add to that. And then the next person will put the big picture together and delve into something we don't know. I think we'd feel pretty comfortable with the County Commission's answer.
Well, I mean, I, Tom, something, Mr. Kennedy, I appreciate you putting together this letter. I would just ask that if staff could maybe just review it.
Oh, this, this should not be the letter. This is really just to say, these were things that came to mind and I think so. And Mr. Dodd, I would say any of us should, should one way send to Ms. Verdurami, who can provide it to Ms. Linda, that, you were right, the session.
Just check the letter out. And I may, I have conflict, I may be able to get out of it to be there, but I have conflict on the first also, so.
If Ms. Ginger is going one way or the other, I will be there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just about four miles faster. I could too.
But what you're basically gonna do is probably read the letter in the public comment.
I'm assuming, I mean, we probably, and we can ask, they have been very accommodating. I think Chairman Kitchen has been as good. We probably could get a, I don't know, there's, time certainly has become a sensitive thing, so I wouldn't ask them for that, but maybe there is some time where he can say where that is best for us to come. And if it's, if that, just to read that statement at the very beginning, that would work out fine. And then I, I don't think there's anything more for us to say. The study has been done, it's been accepted by both boards anyway. It would be, really, it's in their jurisdiction as to whether they're going to change their current policy of letting it sunset early or just let it sunset in 2017. We just wanna make it clear, if you're gonna bring back any category, we believe that schools should be also included.
Well, I think they're probably gonna have some information, some data, right, Mr. Dixon, on what has, what has happened since we have not had impact fees? Isn't that what the county's gonna bring to the table, some analysis of growth or if they're gonna, obviously, that's what they did in the name of attracting growth. So I would assume there would be some information given to it.
But Mr. Dixon, it has to be drilled down, David. It cannot be just overall. You know, like there were 10 new homes built. Well, there were, you know, two new homes, a million and a half dollars, and three new homes, 50,000. You have to have drilled down that.
I don't know what the presentation will consist of. I'm sure they'll look at the number of building permits that have been issued since the building moratorium was issued or went into place. As of October, I had sent a letter to them stating how much revenue that we lost through, you know, as of date, whenever they asked me that question. And I think that letter will be in their backup material. I don't know the extent of the presentation. I know that roads is a big issue with the county and trying to figure out how to deal with the road paving issue. So I think that's what's driving the need to relook at it. But my point would be that, you know, the growth that's occurring in the county translates into growth in the school system, that they're related. And the study that was done, that they adopted, determines what the student generation rate is. So if they're experiencing growth in the road network, then we're experiencing growth in the school system, based on the study.
But, you know, our student population has been flat this year, correct?
Well, we're actually up 50 students. I mean, I was getting ready to present you that report to the Long Range Planning Committee and to the school board. After this Long Range Planning Committee, our student trend is finally trending up for the first year in the last six or seven years. But, I mean, it's not high, high rate of growth, but we are experiencing some growth this year.
The difficulty, and again, I'm saying stuff I know the board understands, but the difficulty for the public in understanding is that depending on where that growth happens, it doesn't take a lot for it to have capital impacts to us because we might have, and I take middle school, where middle school has really been flat even during some of the biggest growth periods that we've had when compared to elementary, for example, that has large growth. Well, it used to be that we would worry about it on, you know, whether it was elementary, middle or high school, those were our silos. Well, now with the way state statute is, we don't just have to worry that a specific school is over capacity, but we also then have to determine, okay, how many third graders are we gonna continually have over the next couple of number of years? Because we can only have 18 students in that classroom. And so it's become far more complex than, than the public understanding, well, you've got 2,000 empty stations in the entire county.
Mr. Kennedy, that's.
That does not really impact.
Always has to be drilled down.
I agree. And it's difficult though, for those outside of the world that we live in. We all understand when we say 18, 21, 22, 24, what that means. But the outside community doesn't understand that and even the commissioners have learned. I mean, we learned at our summit, there was a lot of things that the elected officials didn't understand that our, you know, that we have restraints. Another thing I don't think the community understands is that Citrus County is operating its capital at the lowest statutory allowable funding rate. We have no additional ad valorem taxes collected. We have no additional sales tax and right now we have no impact fees. So everything we are collecting is at the most minimum in the entire state. And one of the few districts that do have absolutely no other, when I talk to some other counties that are talking of bringing back impact fees, they've still had sales tax or they've had a referendum still in place. So they have had other alternatives. Marion County, as we know, I know they're still talking about impact fees, but they are, they have an extra millage rate in capital that they're collecting. That's 2.5 mils that they're collecting in Marion County, very different than what Citrus County is facing. And I would say we are, what district again? What letter grade are we in?
I think it's ice. Yes.
We, we just need to make our message, continue to make our message.
The point I would make to Mr. Dodd's question though is that as far as capacity goes, it's no different than roads. You can't fill up every road before you build a new road. You can't fill up every school before you build a new school. So even though there's excess capacity in the overall system, you know, some of the schools are at capacity right now. Now, they're, and most of them are within 15% of being at capacity. So there's always gonna be excess capacity in the system. You can't fill up every school before you build another school, which is what, you know, if you follow that line of logic, that's what you would do, is you would wait until every school's at 100% before you collect an impact fee or before you collect a revenue to pay for it. But in reality, you need that before you get there.
And one of the things, and I just would say this again, is between 2003 and 2014, this school board expended $13.8 million in impact fee fundable projects. The majority of those projects were not new construction. They were increasing capacity at existing schools because we all know that is a much more cost-effective way of doing things. And so there is unfortunately a thought process out there, well, you're not having any of your schools, so therefore you don't need impact fees. But that's not where our impact fee dollars are going. So I just wanted to, I wanted to bring that up.
Absolutely, no, you're absolutely right. You know, we're gonna breed, Ginger's wanting to take over and, and if Dodd will be there, you'll be there.
And if, Mr. Brad Schultz, it just brought up though, especially in light of all the conversations we've had to have, we're directing the chair to write the letter, Ms. Ginger would then read it. Is there anything now that we're missing that someone wants to say? You know, that, does the, can the chair just write that letter then with, and then Ms. Ginger read that letter? Okay.
But we do wanna be on the agenda too, to see.
I think just, yeah, well, or just say, when is it an appropriate time for us to be able to read that into the record? I don't think that we need to have comment back and forth. I don't think that that's really the purpose of it. We've provided that, we've provided that, we just, you know, make it clear again and so that they know where we stand.
Sounds really pretty.
Not, but my two cents is I think it's very wise to read it into the record because sometimes it was just in a packet and like, if it was written, you had to eat it.
That was my thing.
Yeah. Read it into the record, right?
Yes, yes. Yes. Just try to.
I'm okay.
Or one last word.
In fact, it's very difficult for me to even to read, which, that call, you look at next week. Anything else? Okay, the special meeting stands adjourned, I'm gonna take a short break before the workshop begins. Okay, have about 10 minute break, it's 10:30 now, be back about 10 minutes.